Webinars live and we're recording. All right, we're live. So, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to call the order, the March 16th, Port Orchard City Council Work-Study Session. So if you wouldn't mind joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Brandy, do you have a flag for us? There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we've got a packed agenda tonight and packed agenda for next Tuesday also, so bring your snacks and your pillow for next Tuesday night and we'll try to get you out of a decent hour tonight and we've got Jeff Foster from GGLO and to here to talk about our downtown subarea plan, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, so before I introduce Jeff Foster, and I'm not sure Jeff, if Mitch is also with you tonight, Mitch Potachik has been working with GGLO to help the city with its downtown subarea plan and planned action EIS. When we brought this to the city council a few months ago, the council was concerned about the level of public participation that we were seeing and so the city council had asked us to do some additional outreach and we did a second mailer that included some graphics showing the downtown plan and had an additional public meeting at the planning commission to try to get some input and we did see a slightly higher level of turnout than in our previous effort. And in addition, the Kitsap Bank and the developer that is under contract by the 640 Bay Street property, we had had some concerns about our plan communicated to us and so the other part of tonight's presentation is going up over some revisions that have been made to the plan based on some additional design discussions that have been had between the bank, the city, the port of Bremerton, and also Rice Fergus Miller, who is designing the city's community event center. And so we have made some changes, especially in the western part of downtown on the concept plans. And so tonight, Jeff is going to walk you through the revisions to the plan and kind of introduce you to some of the new elements that have been have been added. So with that, Jeff, please, you can share your screen and load your presentation.
Alrighty, can everybody see the screen there? Picture a beautiful downtown Port Orchard, Nick. Mitch may be out there in the audience somewhere. He was returning from Wisconsin, visiting his family. So he may be out there and if you're, if you're there Mitch, you're, you're there. Anyway, as Nick said, tonight, we're here to provide a brief update on the progress since our last presentation. And go over in the assumed timeline for progress and approvals moving forward. We shared the entire current draft, section three of the subarea plan in the meeting documents, but the intent of this evening is to only review those items that have changed. Let's see if I can click ahead. There we go. How about that? So here we are on the sixteenth at our work session. Looking ahead, anticipated planning commission hearing and review on the fourth of May. Hopefully adoption on the first of June, council review meeting a week after that and then final council meeting on the subarea plan, EIS and adoption on the, towards the end of June. Okay, as noted on the last slide, we recently closed the comment period for the draft EIS and are currently working on preparing responses to the comments that we receive. You notice we received, whoops, kind of moved that over, six comment letters and 59 individual comments and all of those will be included and responded to in the final EIS. The, for the subarea plan, the timeline shifted slightly since we last presented as we conducted additional stakeholder outreach and design work for the downtown near the new community event center that Nick was alluding to a few minutes ago. We'll review those proposed changes on a later slide. And then we're also working on completing a parking demand study for the area. So subarea plan goals, visions and alternatives. With respect to the proposed alternatives, there are no substantive changes to them. You will recall alternative one was no action, alternative two had a residential focus, and alternative three, a mixed use. Whoops, wrong button. There we go. There's the data and statistics associated with each one of those for comparisons in your packet. With respect to the west downtown, we're showing a potential roundabout. I don't know if you all can see my cursor over here. At the intersection of Bay Street and Orchard Boulevard, and that's to improve traffic sightlines and circulation at that intersection. And the west downtown, there, there has been a significant amount of progress here. We show the community events center location. You'll recognize that as the current site of Kitsap Bank. And that is the, the site that was selected through the design process that Rice Fergus Miller is leading together with the city and the county and others. Kitsap Bank is planning now, as many of you may know, to put their future office building east of Orchard Street on what is their current drive-through site. And then there still is a proposed hill climb from Prospect Street down to Bay Street, but it's been relocated from the Port Street alignment that we had in the master plan efforts that we put together a couple of years ago. There's improved pedestrian access to the waterfront and a new crossing is still planned for Port and Bay Street. And you can see those on, on the diagram. It's up on the screen right now. Sorry, I've got like three, three different screens going. Orchard Street is still envisioned to be a plaza space, but vehicle traffic is limited only to service vehicles at this location. Orchard Street now leads to an expanded waterfront open space in addition to multi-use trail improvements. And I should say pursuant to what Nick was alluding to, this this design effort has been collaborative together with the bank, the city, the folks working on the community events center and the potential private mixed use development to the south, on the south side of Bay Street. The attempt is for the community events center, the new banks, office building, and the new mixed use development, all to focus their entries and energy at the intersection of Bay and Orchard Street. So create a dynamic pedestrian corridor from the hill climb across Bay Street to the waterfront. So a lot of work there. In the east downtown area, there really no substantive changes from last time to talk about. And the same is true for the government campus site, really no, nothing substantive in the way of change. The land use and housing goals, there has been some thought put into that. You can see the notes in red here. With respect to heights downtown, some revisions that we're proposing are to measure the height of new development from the proposed future Bay Street elevation. Y'all may be aware that in the interest of resiliency, there are plans in the works to elevate Bay Street a couple of feet. So it would be using that as the baseline height. We also like to allow for higher floor-to-floor building heights to accommodate upper level offices while keeping the number of stories here the same. That would allow for five stories of height, the block between Bay, Prospect, Geiger and Frederick, while limiting the height near City Hall to maintain its position of prominence when entering downtown from the west. Additionally, we like to provide flexibility to existing frontage requirements. And when I'm referring to those in essence, adjusting the build-to-line percentage requirements if additional benefits are provided. And those might be a plaza, improved building access, articulation to the buildings, the ability for service vehicles to get into the community event center and, and issues like that. It's just simply impossible to build the entire front of the building right on the street. It's to help accommodate development of the community events center essentially on the constrained waterfront site. With respect to block frontage requirements, we made some minor modifications in the east downtown to provide additional flexibility to propose new development while maintaining the street character. Orchard Street would now be designated as a trail and the future community events center and Kitsap Bank properties would be designated as a varied footage versus a store foot frontage. And that's going back to some of the things I was talking about on the last one. Frederick, Sidney, Harrison are now varied frontages to accommodate building access from multiple sides. Really, the intent is that the building's front Bay Street in the waterfront with access into the buildings limited, but with the slopes and constrained sites, it's something we believe is necessary and we've discovered through this design process with three different key entities down there. The zoning maps again, nothing substantive to talk about in the way of changes here. Let's see. The height overlay district, let's see. Can I, am I, I get on the wrong slide here? I should be on. Yeah, we revised the block between Bay, Prospect, Geiger and Frederick to allow for five stories while limiting the height near City Hall, already mentioned that. And note that the site is not adjacent to any previously identified view protection courses. And in addition, the grade change uphill from Bay Street would result in the aforementioned five-story building at Bay Street. No substantive changes on the buildable lands now. With respect to the environment and open space goals, no changes at this time. But based on the comments received from the Squamish Tribe and the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, we're currently working with city staff to bolster recommendations related to Black Jack Creek waterfront development mitigation and low impact development strategies. The images here, some of you may recognize from the master plan work we've done in the past. And there are examples of ways we could, could address those concerns. No real changes to the open space projects list. You can see them all listed there. With respect to circulation access and parking goals, very challenging down in this part of town. We'd like to expand the downtown parking standards from Orchard to Robert Geiger. The current standard does not require parking for ground level uses. We'd like to allow for shared parking agreements to meet parking needs in this area. And this is the strategy that's being pursued by the community events center, the new Kitsap Bank office building, as well as the mixed use building planned for the south side of Bay Street. It would also require new development and substantial redevelopment to provide frontage improvements along Bay. Slide 19, see the street sections and kind of the conceptualization of what the character would be like. There are no real changes there from what we discussed last time. And finally, no real changes to the circulation access and parking projects list. And that concludes my brief update on progress that's been made where we are and the schedule moving forward. And like Nick, if you, if you've got anything to add, please do.
Yeah, I wanted to add two things. First of all, Brandy, let me know that Rich Chapansky from EA is in the audience. So if there are any questions about the EIS or Jeff, if you, if you had anything you intended for Rich to share, we can bring him into the present, presentation part of the meeting.
The second, if there are questions, please, please, you know, invite him into the, the circle here.
Okay, the, the second comment I wanted to make was we did do a parking evaluation as part of the development of the alternatives on the west side of downtown. And so prior to the proposed project within the boundaries that are roughly Robert Geiger, Port Street and over to Sidney on the water side of Bay, we estimated that there are 249 public and private parking stalls. And after implementing the concept that has been presented tonight as the preferred alternative, that increases to 310 spaces with most of those being located within the foot of the building for the 640 Bay Street property. So, so there is actually a net increase in parking downtown, even though much of the surface parking on the waterfront is being replaced with public usable space. So we, we did quite a bit of assessment on the parking side of things to make sure that, that we were not losing significant quantities of parking.
So, Councilmember Lucarelli, were you able to get your question answered from Nick or do you still have that question related to the, the purple bubble on the county campus? You're, you're muted.
I do have a question, Nick. On page 13, the presentation, land use policies, policy LUH01. It says to expand the center boundaries to capture the Sydney and Klein corridors and additional area along the east downtown. So I looked at that map, the county campus map, and I just a little concerned about having the corridor, the Sydney corridor continue all the way down into the Kitsap Street area and it includes a lot of the historic homes just beyond the, the campus, the current county campus. Has that always been there and I missed it or is this something new?
You're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, that, those two corridors have always been part of this discussion. We are not proposing any zoning changes to properties in those residential neighborhoods with the exception of the areas immediately abutting the county campus. I think there may be some minor changes and at least one property is reverting from a residential mixed use back to a an R2 zone because that, that resident had, had requested that as part of our public outreach process. Currently, we have residential mixed use properties once you are farther south of Division on Sydney, on Sydney Avenue. As far as Klein and I'm, I'm going to the, the land use map that is on page 15.
Nick, I believe the concern, the concern is Sydney Avenue headed north of Division and I don't believe there's any changes to that zoning at all.
Correct. They are in the center, but there are no zoning changes proposed north of Division.
If you'd like me to share screen again, just to reference.
Sure, yeah, if, if you can.
So Nick, that illustration then is just for a center.
Correct. And, and the reason that.
Please, it's 13, that one's 14.
Back, back one page. She's referring to the purple bubble.
Yeah.
One more, one more slide. Too much.
There we go.
No.
I went too far?
Maybe.
Page 13.
It's his presentation's different than our package.
It's slide 11.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
There. Now, if you look at the, the the county campus, as it's described, it goes both sides of Sydney, well into the neighborhoods. And I'm just asking and wondering about the potential for that development down the road. Do you see what I'm saying? That's a historic era and, you know, we've talked about leaving neighborhoods alone and I see on other maps that, you know, they're the neighborhoods are staying as existing, but I'm just concerned about that, showing that.
Yeah, the, the west downtown, east downtown and county campus are really just trying to distinguish areas when we're talking about them in policy. It would not be a problem to amend the purple blob on the map to exclude portions of Sydney when you're north of Division and south of the west downtown. You should also be able to see there's kind of a faint red outline that includes the entire neighborhood up there and goes further south, I think, to oh, one block south of the given center. And so that red line is actually the center boundary. And the reason that we've drawn that line where it is, is that in order to meet the criteria to be considered a countywide center with PSOP, you have to have a minimum area. And so even though we're not increasing zoning in those areas, we are including them in the center for the purpose of, of demonstrating that our center is planned to meet this minimum size requirement. And so that is why the line is drawn where it is, but the, the purple blob is just, is just to help when we're talking about different areas of the city, we're calling the county campus sort of the uphill area along Klein and Sidney. We're not necessarily proposing changes within all portions of the purple area or, or all portions of the west downtown or east downtown area as well.
Okay, I understand you said something just before that when you said if you feel more comfortable with taking some of that out, I would feel more comfortable with your taking some of that out.
So, so we could actually make it so that the county campus does not abut downtown in the area between Division and the, it would loop around for the administration building. We could, we could separate the county campuses being the uphill area and have the hillside is just, it's in the center, but it's not part of one of the described areas. If that makes you feel more comfortable.
It really does.
You want to designate it a different color and if you want to have connectivity to these zones and call it downtown or something.
Do we actually, I'm just wondering, do we need to have it connect? Is that really important? Because since we have the little red line in there and we're using the area for that, is it important to have it designated another color? I don't think it is.
It's not, it's not at all. So I, I have no problem if the areas don't quite abut or, or perhaps we just carve out the ravine and Sidney, but leave Klein as being the connection. I will look at it more closely and try to refine that so that the historic houses you're concerned about are, are excluded to the greatest extent that they can be.
I'd love that. Thank you.
Councilmember Chang and then Councilmember Clausen.
Yeah, just following up on what Cindy brought up. I remember this discussion last time that it seemed that the outline of the county campus or purple blob, as we're calling it tonight, seemed a little large for the area. And to dovetail on what Cindy said, if it could be constrained, maybe the northern boundary would be Division. Or that, that might, I would feel more comfortable with that as well because currently the purple blob is the largest set, well, maybe not for east downtown, but I can't see the whole thing. And having a gap there between county campus and west downtown does make sense. It just makes the county campus look like it's encroaching on downtown.
I think it just opens up the window for misunderstanding when people are casually viewing these kinds of documents.
Yeah, and I, I think another change would be that red line should probably be a little bit thicker so that it is more clear to a reading. So I will ask the consultant to, to clean that up for us.
Thank you very much.
There could be an argument for connectivity on Klein because you've got City Hall on that side. You've got Deshires, West Shire's law firm in that professional building. You know, and the county admin building is, is only two blocks up. And, you know, going up on that side, but, but I hear what you're saying. There aren't any commercial act buildings or, or zoning over on the Sydney side.
Right. And the little red line thickened would take care of that, Rob.
Okay, that's, that's an easy one. Were there any other questions or concerns?
Member Clausen had, has raised hand raised.
Well, I, I'm trying to understand what is the difference between the purple blob, as we're calling it, and the, the red line designating that area to the south of the purple blob. I mean, what's, what's the difference?
Well, and actually, there's, there's already been one revision to this map based on the comments that I provided the consultant and the revision is that the, the county campus, the purple blob is actually the current center boundary in our comprehensive plan. So they just took that layer and put it, put it on this map because it was an existing center boundary. I think some of the policies that have been written refer to the county campus and I'd have to, I'd have to scroll through and find an example of that, but if, if a policy is talking about change, I, I can tell you that there is at least one parking stand or one standard that talks about changing the requirement for ground floor parking. Currently, you don't have to provide parking for ground floor uses, I think, between Orchard and Harrison. We're saying that that should be wrapped around to Robert Geiger Street. And so that policy refers to the west downtown area. So, so there are generic references to different areas within the center that have kind of their own distinct geography. But there's, there's absolutely no requirement that this figure even appear at all. We could just simply have a map that showed the center boundary. And that would be fine too.
Well, my, my question is more in line with you've got a solid red line that identifies the west downtown. You've got a solid blue line that identifies east downtown. What is the dashed red slash orange line that goes around the purple blob and as far south as, what is that, Belcher?
Yeah, that, that is the center boundary. So that.
So that center is called what?
The, the downtown Port Orchard Center.
Okay, and that is different than the west downtown center?
It's all together. Yes.
Right, John, and if you look at that red line, it goes all the way to the east of the high school. Okay, so the east, the east downtown is just a portion of this larger area.
Okay, now, now I understand that, that whole area that includes what is the purple blob, the west downtown blob and the east downtown is the designation for center.
Correct.
The downtown center.
Yeah, the only thing is it's labeled county campus and that's, I think, misleading.
Why? There is conditions that we have placed on that area. That area is larger than what we originally put conditions on, but we identified what was the county campus that would allow the county to grow beyond their courthouse.
They're not going to grow that far.
Well, this is larger than the area that we originally identified. I think the the original area goes to Kendall down as far south as Kendall, doesn't go beyond that. And it doesn't go down to the north all the way to Kitsap Street, but somehow or for some reason, this county campus designation grew beyond what the council's taken action on so far.
Yeah, it's Dwight to Kendall, as John referred to. Was, was the original campus that Councilmember Chang and I and Councilmember Clausen probably 15, 16 years ago, maybe longer approved.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just curious what the differences are and I'm not quite sure what the significance of the purple blob is. What it really means other than we just picked an area that we're calling County Gap.
That's accurate.
Okay.
Mr. Dorsey's patiently raised his hand.
Yes, thank you. So I just, two clarifications parking wise. Make sure that the Nick and the GGLO team are aware to one document in particular is when you did the parking study on the waterfront. Just make sure that you, you have looked over that parking agreement between the city and the port. Just know that that's still in play. And then the other thing was just making sure with parking garages, we, in the old D, Development Overlay District, DoD, there was a We in the old D uh Development Overlay District, DOD, there was a restriction for parking garage entrances off of Bay Street, so um, just make sure that you're looking at that, so.
And and that is a change that we are making. We we have created permission for one ground level driveway to the south of Port on Bay Street, so just past City Hall to get into the garage that is proposed to provide the majority of parking downtown. We are making an allowance in the code for there to be an entrance off of Bay Street, but it can't be right at the corner. It's got to at least be partially into the block so that there's still a storefront on the the ground floor. But otherwise, you're talking about building a parking garage with ramps and you're gonna get way less parking out of the structure that way. You have to have a way to get uh, to the ground level parking without eating up up a bunch of the garage with with a parking ramp.
And then to Mark's point about the agreement with the port, the port has been at our meetings and it we build this out and you know, the that is our DNR lease in front of the ports property for office. And the DNR lease that we that is the ports that we utilize for commuter parking. When we build this out, it will result in us having to renegotiate that agreement with the port. It's just gonna have to happen and they're aware of it.
I just want to make sure everybody is aware of it.
Yep, and so is the port. We're talking to them.
I have a couple of questions about this slide that's up and maybe I missed something. But um you have in orange what um is a building that currently ho- houses private businesses? Uh, Josephine's and Carter's Chocolate and the Dock and some other things. And you have it here in orange like it's going to redevelop and the other privately owned businesses um, buildings are not. Was there a reason for that? Do we know that that's going to redevelop or not?
I I think the thought is that that particular block being that it everything is constructed on piles is not it doesn't have the uh ability to stick around as long as other blocks. We don't think that there's any imminent plan to redevelop, but when it does redevelop, the goal was to create a street along the waterfront where you would have businesses facing the water as well as businesses facing Bay Street. And so um long term, that is the goal for if that block redevelops.
Okay, when when I look at that particular slide that's up, I I get that and I understand or it's my understanding that this particular slide is replacing the um what would have been page nine of um maybe our packet. If someone can take this back to the beginning. Right, if you see this one, that same building here shows a different configuration for that. That building.
Yeah.
I was just kind of wanting those to be the same, I guess, is was my question.
Yeah, and the the most recent um revised concept, the one that is on oh, the the more refined drawing on page ten. I did notice that that building changed and you're right, it should probably more closely match what is on the previous page. So Jeff, if we can take a look at picking one, one configuration and going with it. I think the old concept had an alley going through the block where there would be kind of a back of house uh area for loading and unloading and uh deliveries, so um it looks like the newer version is more of a four sided building. And I don't know whether the alley is still included in that concept or not.
The prior image is something consistent with someone who's a developer that that's talk, talk to me.
Okay, then my other question is regarding um the stair climb and it going across to the Orchard Plaza. Is because that is a state highway and I realize that we have some calming events or applications in there, is that really where we want a lot of pedestrians walking across the street?
It would it's gonna be a lot of activity down there and and I do think you want pedestrians being able to access the waterfront. I think you want the traffic to be going very slow through there. You're absolutely right. It's a state highway. Uh, but some of the images that that we were sharing about the character of Bay Street in the future promotes pedestrian safety and traffic calming uh to accommodate that. And there would of course be uh appropriate levels of design by traffic engineers and so on and so forth.
Yeah, and I I think the real um, the goal here is with that being that the community center entrance and a future entrance to um Kitsap Bank is to really activate that space. And so I think from a um, oh whether this will meet warrants or not, I think between water access, the community center and the bank and a corridor connecting to City Hall. Um, I think we can get Wash Dot uh to agree to this, provided that there are adequate um markings and uh that the design passes Wash Dot's process.
That was my concern. My concern is that it's right on that corner.
Yeah, I think you're gonna have to really focus on the pedestrian mall, what I'd call the pedestrianized area, going all the way back to Port Street. You're gonna be literally slowing traffic down before the curve as far as some sort of a pavement distinction, you know, brick pavers or something. You're gonna, you're gonna want to create the slowdown before the curve.
And it's really not going to be necessary to have that uh connectivity because we're we're taking all, I mean, a lot of our parking off the waterfront and and tucking it into the hillside and the community center and the bank in particular are going to utilize that parking structure. Councilmore Clausen, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One is on the discussion of the differences between the the renderings of the building next to Sydney. Uh, the one thing that I noticed, I'm wondering if the the rendering, that rendering that you're showing now isn't the upper floors, if you will, you still have the drive entrance going into that building off of Frederick, so I'm assuming
Might be parked.
The ground level is where those would go in. And then the other comment is in regards to the pedestrian crossing, I agree, this is gonna be a pretty busy place with pedestrians. But you also have a crosswalk uh around the corner there uh near Port Street, so there's gonna be a pedestrian crosswalk there as well, so that whole corner needs to be looked at with a lot of traffic calming so that all vehicles slow to a crawl when they go around there.
And and on that note, um, I think the mayor has mentioned this previously, but as soon as we have some sort of agreement to acquire the site for the community center, we do have a scope to do a high level design of the corridor from Robert Geiger around to Frederick. And so we would be meeting with Wash Dot and really coming up with this plan and refining it at a at a engineering level. Um, and looking at some of the elevation challenges with flooding as well, but I think we would iron out really the the corridor layout, the streetscape amenities, the crosswalk locations, any types of beacons that may be required um as part of that initial process.
Just money.
I'd like to commend uh councilmember Clausen for reading the plans correctly.
Yeah. All right, other questions or comments, concerns?
Is there any way that the foot fairy ramp can be added to this drawing? Just as a reference point, it doesn't have to be pretty, but it seems like it's missing where we have lines to maybe the underwater wires at the end of Sydney.
Yep. Good catch. There's a ferry dock there. It's, yep, it's in that drawing, but it's not in the other drawing. Yep. That's what he's referring to. Okay, other comments? Right, thank you, Jeff.
See, everybody.
Yeah. All right. So we're on to our second item, which is the KRCC update to the countywide planning policies. Nick, this is yours.
Right, I feel like I've spent a lot of time on this already today, but uh
Yeah, you and me both.
So um, about a week ago after the last
Oh yeah, I forgot about John.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, about a week ago after the last council meeting, I went ahead and emailed you the draft of the countywide planning policies. It's still a working draft and so some of the red lines that are in there are um are still being worked on or more may change. But I wanted to check in with um with with you guys as uh the uh body that is going to have to vote to ratify this document once, once all of the jurisdictions come to an agreement. And at least familiarize yourselves with uh number one, what is, what policies are in the countywide planning policies and then what changes are being proposed this time around? So uh in twenty nineteen or early twenty twenty, PSRC adopted the new regional growth strategy, that's Vision twenty fifty. And in Vision twenty fifty, they identified a deadline for each county to adopt updates to the countywide planning policies by December thirty first of twenty twenty one. So we are working towards a December thirty first deadline to make sure that our countywide planning policies have been updated to be consistent with Vision twenty fifty. And so um uh all of the planning directors in the county are very appreciative of uh KRCC's decision to hire a consultant to help facilitate this update. And so we have been working with LDC, uh a planning consultant and um uh the planner's name is Clay White and he has been helping facilitate the update to this document and uh initially, he went through and kind of did a checklist with PSRC to really identify what sections need to be looked at and what sorts of changes and content needs to be added to these documents. And then he also asked uh all of the planning directors and elected officials um of, you know, to try to find out what areas of concern they had with regard to the existing document to understand are there things that are working, that aren't working, or are there processes that we don't uh don't currently use? So the countywide planning policies are broken into um elements A through N uh plus an introduction. And then there are several appendices. And I'm just gonna really briefly talk about each of these elements. And if anyone has a question um as we go through them, please feel free to ask. Um, I know that at least um other elected officials on the the KRCC Plan Paul um uh meeting today did have specific questions that they wanted us to be looking at. And so if you have concerns, this is definitely the appropriate time to raise those. And and I would just add that I think and councilmember Ashme, Ashby, correct me if I'm wrong, but April sixth is the deadline for elected officials to get any comments uh into our group. Otherwise, we are going to to fall behind on our our schedule.
I thought it was April seventh, but April sixth is fine. Um, we had a meeting scheduled for April sixth. It has been canceled. And so we can use the sixth or the seventh. I thought they had said the seventh today.
I think it's the seventh also.
Yeah, you might be, you might be correct. I like to be early.
That's right, that's right.
So um, in terms of the introduction to the document, the the main change is just updating to reference Vision twenty fifty instead of Vision twenty forty. And then the KRCC board uh maybe a year or two ago worked to rewrite the vision statement for um Kitsap County. And so the proposed language on the vision statement is in red line in the document that you received. And that was written by the elected officials and me, the planning directors and um the transportation uh folks really didn't have a whole lot of input on this. Um, so hopefully there there aren't concerns there.
I'm gonna interject just a little bit in that at the Plan Paul meeting today, uh the electeds did discuss feedback from our equity retreat. And they did have just some minor changes to the um to the language in that first paragraph, uh making it a little, having it acknowledge equity.
Okay, thank you. And and I appreciate um uh for my my three elected officials who sit uh are who participate in KRCC. If I miss anything, please feel free to chime in. So moving on from the introduction chapter, uh element A is the countywide pla- pattern of growth. There aren't a lot of major changes here. I I think um one of, one of the one of the main things is that the um we're we're clarifying the role of urban and rural areas a little bit better than it had been stated previously. And so you'll see some changes under CW one and CW two dealing with urban and rural lands. I I
Nick, what page are you on right now?
Thirty six of the packet.
Thank you. I'm just trying to catch up.
Sure. Um, so I I didn't really provide a whole lot of feedback on um on element A. But if you have any concerns, let me know. I think that the meteor chapters uh are still to come. Um, element B deals with urban growth areas and this is still an area where where the planning directors are are working on the policy language. I think that the uh Saquamish tribe has expressed some concerns with some of the changes that are proposed. I know that uh Paul's Bow is interested in UGA expansion uh around Paul's Bow. And so they're concerned with the language that is here and whether they will be able to accomplish that goal or not. There, there is a bit more work that needs to be done here, but it mostly deals with UGA three. Uh, that that particular policy, we've deleted the old language concerning how you justify expanding your urban growth area. Um, and we've added simpler language that is copied verbatim out of state law. However, that state law language is actually maybe a little bit more open ended than our our previous language. And so I think that's, that's where there's still going to be a little bit more discussion. The other important clarification that is made in the in element B is that we have had several people come to us over the years asking us to expand our urban growth area. And in the law, it is clearly the county's responsibility to to consider this. And so anybody who wants to expand the urban growth area needs to apply to the county. And so we have clarified that the process begins with an application to the county um to make the change rather they can't, they can't come and ask Port Orchard to change the urban growth area. It has to be done uh through the county. So I think that's a, that is a helpful change that we can point to. When when somebody comes to us and wants to expand, we we point them uh up the hill for for that sort of request. Um, element C is being totally overhauled. And the work on element C is actually, it's been going on for a good twenty four months and precedes our hiring of uh LDC to help us through the process. And as you remember, when we updated our comprehensive plan in twenty sixteen, we adopted the centers' strategy of growth, which included making plans for centers around our community where we would concentrate growth and really focus our investments in infrastructure and transit. Um, that was a theme in in Vision twenty forty. It's it's been strengthened in Vision twenty fifty. And so the countywide planning policies are now just catching up on centers because um, the PSRC actually had to adopt their own centers' policies to implement the uh the goals of Vision twenty forty. So the version that is in your packet is actually old. It is being totally replaced with a new version. So I'm not going to get into the details other than to say I I believe that we are moving in the direction of just adopting PSRC's standard. Almost verbatim, um, the city of Port Orchard will seek to have a handful of countywide centers and a handful of local centers. We are not pursuing any regional centers at this time. Um, a lot of the discussion on centers previously was around the issue of rural centers and the county wanting to have places like Manchester, um Ilahi, uh Saquamish as centers. And because those areas are actually rural, they're not supposed to be taking a lot of growth. And of course, centers are supposed to be taking a lot of growth. So there's this um, there's kind of this uh in cons- or impasse concerning how to deal with these rural areas that are uh that sort of act like a a small town or a center like like Manchester. And so we are still working out those details. Um, and when you get to element D, which is the rural element of the countywide planning policies, you will see that they have changed the uh the rural communities. They're now calling them rural centers, but But the word center actually appears a hundred and sixty times elsewhere in the countywide planning policies. And by defining rural centers and urban centers. When somebody says centers, it's not clear whether you're talking about urban or rural areas, and for instance, for transit, it says. Uh there are goals dealing with providing transit to uh to centers, and I believe the intent is for urban centers to have transit. Not necessarily the rural centers, and so um by adding that language, I think we've complicated the policies and. Uh this is a a continued area of of discussion. I'm gonna stop there, is there any question so far on where we're at or anything that anybody wants to add?
Questions for Mr. Bond? Why aren't you even in the meeting today? Cause you're way more efficient than what was going on.
All right, element E, uh countywide strategies for the natural environment. This is a chapter where there actually are a lot of changes that are being driven by vision twenty fifty concerning. The environment, climate change, the health of Puget Sound, um all sorts of uh. Policies that are trickling down from vision twenty fifty into our document. Um and while there are a lot of changes, there has not been a lot of disagreement over any of the policies in this chapter. So I would say this has been one of the least discussed um. Uh elements because there just isn't a controversy or disagreement among the jurisdictions who are uh meeting at the staff level. And um I'm not sure if any of the elected officials are going to raise any concerns here, but if you have them. Uh this would be the time to uh to point those out. Moving on to element F contiguous, compatible and orderly development. Um this chapter really had very limited changes. The main changes had to do with implementing policies concerning equity and displacement uh as required by vision twenty fifty. Um and so we, these are things that we really um we we are required to do. Um to be consistent with vision twenty fifty, and everybody agreed that the policies as written uh seemed uh like they were workable. Today, we did have a a lot of discussion on element G concerning the sighting of public capital facilities. Uh po- um capital facilities are. Um this is a little tricky because there is some inconsistency in state law. As to whether this is referring to essential public facilities or public facilities of countywide significance. Um the the real sticking point on this chapter is that. The existing language requires that anyone looking to locate. A facility like a group home or a jail or an airport or any any type of essential public facility. Is required to go through a process at KRCC to help identify the best site for that particular use. Um this is problematic for a number of reasons, and so today we pre- we presented three alternatives to the KRCC Plan Paul. Group and asked for some direction. And the the preferred direction that we received was that we really shouldn't have a countywide planning process to select sites. But rather when something is proposed, there should just be countywide notice provided to all of the jurisdictions within KRCC. And so it's more of a um. We all have regulations in our local codes concerning these uses, and when something like this is proposed, or if Bremerton. Uh you know, if if commercial um aviation came to Bremerton. Um and major changes are proposed at the airport, Bremerton is going to let everybody know about it, and then we can participate in their permitting process. Whether it's through SEPA or through uh a plan adoption or some other permit process. We have the ability to participate within that process rather than creating a totally separate process at at KRCC.
Nick, quick question. What's your opinion? Do you feel that's adequate?
Well, I I did um, I did tell the mayor that my preference was uh option three um today and. The the biggest reason that I felt like option three was the best where where we're just simply notifying the other jurisdictions when we've received an application. Is that certain essential public facilities, even though they're essential public facilities, they're not necessarily public. You could have a private entity providing uh mental health services or um. The you know, any number of, uh I mean, there are private prisons, there's all kinds of private entities that may apply to you for permits. And it it and maybe Charlie would weigh in on this, but I have always been advised. Uh not to interfere with somebody's ability to submit a permit application and vest to development regulations. And so if you're telling a do that, somebody who's looking to apply for a permit in your city, that they have to go to the regional planning board. To get to consult on picking a location for their use. Um that seems to be problematic to me, especially for some of the um. I mean, and and airport is one thing, but a group home, which is six or fewer people. Um in a in a sort of a a home that has additional services, um it seems to me that you are. Uh you're really interfering with somebody's ability to come in and apply for a permit at that point. So that was, that was my preference. Um and we, you know, we we battered around the idea of trying to say. There's a tier one list of uses and a tier two, and that tier one uses like an airport or a prison would go through this process, but tier two uses would. Would just come straight to the city for a permit and um. Given that this process has never really been used before, we just, we don't see it as being necessary. I I think so, we we just prefer to stick with the notice of application and um. And coordinate as we're updating the planning policies and adopting our local plans rather than than having any separate process.
Thank you.
Sure. Um element H, transportation. Um so my understanding is that Mark. Uh Mark's group, the Trans-Tac body has actually proposed quite a few amendments to element H that aren't in the draft that I sent you. And so I actually haven't seen the latest and greatest on element H, and we are now talking about a joint meeting between Trans-Tac and LUTAC. To work on some of these issues. Um my big concern and and what I'm seeing is being missing from element H is that. Centers are being reduced in their importance in transportation, and my understanding from PSRC has always been that. They're wanting to use the center's strategy to help prioritize funding for in support of growth. And they want to grow efficiently and therefore channel investment to centers. What I'm hearing the county say is that all transportation facilities are important, and they don't want to prioritize centers over. Other areas, and so um it sounds like there's going to be a bit more discussion on this topic. Um my other concerns in this chapter are, there's a lot of mention of level of service standards. And one policy in particular actually says that the um. The county and the cities um should adopt similar level of service standards, and I'm I'm trying to find that policy right now. Um I highlighted it on my copy, but not in the packet, and I'm looking at the packet right now. So so in any event, um we appealed the county comprehensive plan in twenty sixteen because uh for for a number of reasons, but. Um partially because the city doesn't actually have an enforceable level of service standard for transportation. And so the countywide planning policy actually says that the cities and the county are supposed to be using sort of the same metric for measuring. Traffic impacts, and that is not currently being implemented. And so when you're measuring level of service, there's non-motorized level of service, there is segment level of service, so how many cars can go. Uh along a segment of road, and then there's intersection level of service, which is how long? Do I have to wait before I can get through an intersection? And so every time it mentions level of service, it's not being specific about whether you're talking about motor, non-motorized or. Intersection or segment, and then um I think there's, there are certain goals. It's like surrounding safety and getting to to zero deaths where. The goal talks about improving level of service, but level of service doesn't actually have a direct impact on safety unless you're talking about non-motorized. Which would be providing sidewalks or other uh facilities to to uh improve safety. So I think there's some work that needs to be done there. Um and the. The final comment is, one of the policies in here also says that the city and the counties are going to adopt a complete street program, and of course. The county um I don't believe has a complete street program for rural areas, and so it seems to me that that needs to be changed. Uh unless we're going to expect sidewalks to be built all the way out into the county. Um Mark, because this is your group's um chapter, is there anything that you wanted to add about the discussion that I might not be? Uh in the loop on?
No, other than. You're right, the the version you have is changed considerably, and it's going to change considerably again. Um they're looking at, after our last meeting where they initially said they weren't going to make edits. They started to make edits, and I had told them that the city was going to be providing. New changes, and so my understanding right now is they're going to try to schedule a joint. LUTAC, Trans-TAC. Group to hash through this one more time because.
I can address that a little bit, Mark, because we discussed it at the executive committee level. And it's my understanding. And I am, I understand this because Nick has told me this. That one of the issues with the LUTAC is getting all the community development directors together to find a. A meeting time that works well for them. So what we suggested is that they expand one of their meetings by an hour to include. Trans-TAC at the end of it, rather than scheduling an entire separate meeting and trying to find. One more date to get all of the um DCD directors together.
Okay, well, based on what we talked about last. Thursday, I think it was, they'd better, they'd better leave part of it a time.
And if it's, if if you, if if that's a consensus, then we can do that, but. Um I know Nick's group has struggled to find. Um enough time for them to sit down and actually go through these in in depth. Am I misquoting you, Nick?
No, it's been really difficult, I think, you know, the mayor has given his state of the city presentation the last couple of days and. Has talked about how busy we are and um. I I think it's really hard for the planning directors to find a chunk of time where everybody is available on the same day, I mean, where we have set. Once a month meetings, those dates are are sort of reserved, but. Um I mean, if we're, if we're doing a doodle poll, we're like two and a half months out to find a date where everybody is available without. Making major shifts in in meetings and appointments.
Right, which was why we were trying to add on to your meeting rather than trying to find another separate date. For everyone to get together.
Right, correct. Move it, Kiz and the guy that who's the consultant, Clay.
Clay.
I know that Kiz and Clay said, hey, let us try to. Take all these comments and get everything up to a current red line.
Right.
Before taking one last hash through, so I'm I'm not really sure where we're at right now.
Right, and the other thing is, I believe that some of the KRCC staff is going to meet individually. With um some of the jurisdictions that have brought up um significant changes.
Yes, that's my understanding as well.
Yeah, the meeting Thursday was, it felt like two steps forward, one step back. Or one step forward and two steps back.
All right, well, um that's all I had on transportation. Um the next element is housing. Um I think the big change here is that we are, um number one, we are defining. Um different housing thresholds in terms of affordability, um extremely low income, very low income. Uh moderate, middle and upper income, and so um I I think that that's these. The policies coming from PSRC are so are so specific in terms of the different. Um affordability thresholds that we needed these definitions in our policies to help implement. Goal, implement these goals and policies when it comes to adopting our local plans. Um. Mo- there's, there's some policies that have been added dealing with missing middle housing and moderate density housing. Um I think Port Orchard is already pretty far in front on this issue because we've adopted. Uh zoning that does allow for the the missing middle housing types, and so I don't anticipate having to do a lot. Uh to implement the housing chapter, I think this is going to be much more of a burden for um for. Bainbridge Island and Paul's bow where affordability is more of a problem, I think I I provided a the uh. Data to the council around the first of the year showing our affordability index, and that Port Orchard is actually still. Uh considered to be uh an affordable place to to locate. Um so I'm I'm hopeful that that the housing policies aren't going to be too painful. Uh for the city as we update our comprehensive plan on on this next uh go around. Um element J, countywide economic development. Um this is another one of the chapters that really hasn't had any controversy, it's just updating for vision twenty fifty. Element K uh deals with fiscal impact, again, this is a non-controversial uh. Chapter, and then elements L and M deal with tribal and military coordination. There aren't any changes proposed with either of those uh elements or or nothing, nothing significant. Um and then you get to the um to element N, which is roles and responsibilities. There's a little bit of cleanup to reflect um. Getting rid of some processes that we don't actually follow, and then also um. Uh serving as a forum to resolve disputes, but um we we really haven't spent a whole lot of time on this chapter because there there just isn't any controversy. So then you have the appendix, the appendices to the planning wide, the countywide planning policies. We will have to adopt new growth targets, which currently I believe is appendix B. And isn't even in the document that I sent you because that that's the, those are the planning targets we have to. Uh plan around, which are both housing and jobs that we will have to accommodate within our city limits. I've also suggested to Clay that we delete appendix D. Because the revenue sharing agreement, there was only one reference to this agreement in the entire planning policy document. And it has been deleted, so there's no need for the appendix D. Uh this was the revenue sharing interlocal agreement that, as is noted here, I believe Port Orchard has actually withdrawn from this agreement. Um I assume sometime around the annexations uh about a decade ago. Uh and then finally, we will have an appendix at the very end of the document. That identifies the countywide and regional centers that are recognized throughout the county. And I believe where we have landed on this is that we are going to wait to update this list until. After all of the cities have updated their comprehensive plans, and that's going to give each city a chance to make sure that all of their. Plans are in conformance with vision twenty fifty and the centers' policies, and then we will, we will update the list. And if if we want to add a center to the list later, um the most recent version of the centers' element that I've seen from Carla Bouton. Who works for Paul's bow and is helping draft that document, does include a process where annually, if we want to submit. Uh to have a center added to the list, we can, we can add that, um we can apply for that annually. So that concludes my presentation. Um again, you will. Uh you will be seeing this again probably uh at the end of this year or early next year. And you will be asked to ratify the document once the county has voted to approve it. And four out of the five Kitsap jurisdictions have to vote to ratify this for it to become effective, so. Um that's Paul's bow, Bainbridge Island, Bremerton, Port Orchard and the county uh for, the county obviously has to approve it, so. Really, three out of the four cities then has to ratify it before it takes effect. Um anything that uh mayor or council member Ashby you'd like to add, or perhaps uh council member Clausen acting as the. Uh on behalf of transit?
I would say that again, with our equity discussion today, there was um. Some language brought forth, Mark, that I would like to get with you on, um because they were putting in some shells that. I thought maybe a little um. Onerous, and also as our council reviews this, the countywide planning policies are the foundation. For our comprehensive plans, so the countywide planning policies. Need to comply with vision twenty fifty, and they need to um. Comply with the RCWs. And then they need to be flexible enough that each one of our jurisdictions can. Create our comprehensive plans to our particular community's needs. And our comprehensive plan doesn't have to mirror Bainbridge Island, so the. The countywide planning policies are simply the foundation um for our. Comprehensive plan, we can make our comprehensive plan as prescriptive as we want. And it's, I'm kind of of the opinion it needs to be more flexible within the county by planning policies. Um and I would also say acknowledge. And I would also say acknowledge all the work Nick has done. He's been um a real leader in this effort and we appreciate that. And I would say, moving forward, um. If we want to make sure that what comes out of this does no harm to Port Orchard. If we get in situations where we have to make a decision, um. Uh, to me, the the benchmark is how does it affect Port Orchard? And the other council members may have a a different feeling on that, but if we, if we have to give and take a little bit. That would be my um benchmark for making decisions.
Well, and I think you, I think you heard at the retreat that there are some other. Jurisdictional legislators that. Have certain opinions that. Would go against what the city is trying to achieve.
Right.
Wanting shells when it should be shits, so.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, my Beck was spot on when she said that, you know, this is the, we can be more restrictive in our. We don't want the countywide planning policies to be the. The, the bench be more restrictive than what our code is. We, those individual jurisdictions can uh can adopt. Policy and code that's more restrictive than the countywide planning policies, but we can't have policies that are less restrictive than than the. C P Ps, so. Um, Councilor Rosa Pepe.
So not to put pressure on, well, first of all, let me back up and say thank you to Nick and Mayor and. John and Beck for their uh going through this because it's a quite an exercise having set through a couple of these um planning exercises. Uh, is there anything that's contentious right now in in the document? Uh, I realize that other cities may have their own druthers, but is there anything that right now we should be very careful about?
Nick said on him. Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, I would say that the two big items are the. U G A expansion policy and what, what you have to demonstrate in order to justify a U G A expansion. And and part of the difficulty here is that um. And and without talking about jurisdictions in Kitsap County, some jurisdictions would prefer to grow out rather than growing up. They don't want to take steps to. Increase density within their cities prior to expanding their boundary and so um. It's important to balance the the requirement that a jurisdiction take reasonable measures to accommodate growth within their existing boundary. Before they seek expansion of their boundary. And so it's it's kind of a balancing act and. We, we want to allow for expansion when it is truly justified, but we don't want to expand unnecessarily and take the. Infrastructure costs, the environmental impacts, you know, all of the negative that can go along with with growing out, so. I think there's still a little bit of work to do there and I think that the the county is really hung up on this rural center issue and. Um, we thought, I thought we had a solution after our last meeting where we were going to go through the entire document and everywhere the word center appeared. We would clarify whether it meant urban or rural. And now the consultant has taken a look at that and said, you know what, that actually doesn't make sense. I think it's better to get rid of. The rural center descriptor and so we need to have further discussion because the county is. It is not necessary to identify rural centers in our countywide planning policies. The county really wants to I to to have that in the policy and um. There are too many policies in this document that refer to directing growth to centers and if if. A rural area is called a center, I'm worried that it will be used to justify um more rural growth, which is something that. Uh, the county has been way out of line with with our planning targets in terms of of meeting those goals and objectives. So I, I would, I would say those are probably the two biggest issues. I think we're actually pretty close on centers. It's just that we haven't had time to sit down and review the draft document yet and so. If there, there could still be a controversy on urban centers, but I I really don't have. I don't know that for sure yet.
I would add, Nick, Vision twenty fifty does not mention rural centers. There's nothing in Vision twenty fifty that that mentions a rural center. And at our meeting today, uh, the city of Paulsbow expressed concerns. In the capital facilities area um of allowing certain things to be put in. The rural area because that would create growth. Um, so and we don't want to have to start providing water and sewer and. Transit out to some of our more remote areas, so. I think I concur with Nick. I, I think that that's going to be uh an area of discussion.
Councilmember Chang.
I just have a question for Nick. Is Silverdale considered an urban growth area or rural growth area?
Okay, Silverdale is an urban growth area and it is designated as a regional center, so it is the highest. Well, it's the second highest order of center um. In within the framework for the county, although. Of all of the regional centers in the Puget Sound, Silverdale is probably the the lowest intensity. Um, that there is, and I know that uh I've heard from other jurisdictions in other counties that they do not understand why. Why Silverdale is a regional center. Um, but we, I think the position has always been that Kitsap County should have. Two regional centers and so Bremerton is one and Silverdale is the other. And there's, there's a regional pot of of transportation funding that can only be uh. That can only benefit centers and so uh the county, the county has seen some regional funding to Silverdale because of that.
And the port of Bremerton is also a center still, aren't they? Or did that change?
That's an industrial center, so it's, it's a different, it doesn't have a residential component, but yes, it is.
From a funding perspective, it 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 can apply.
And and Jay, there will be one other controversy, but it hasn't. We haven't started it yet and that is going to be the process of divvying up who has to take how much growth and so. Um, within the regional growth strategy, Paulsbow, Port Orchard. Bainbridge Island and Kingston are the transit oriented communities. And we are going to be given a number that we have to divide up between the four of us and I can tell you that um. Some jurisdictions will not want as much growth as others and uh that that could be contentious. The good thing is that Silverdale is in a category by itself, as is Bremerton, and so their numbers are are really predetermined from. Uh, P S R C and so there, there shouldn't be any disagreement except potentially among uh the four entities I I mentioned.
And Jay.
So back to that, is there any thing that we, you need from us right now? Cause it. It does sound like there's a couple of the possible deal breakers here.
Um, I don't know that there, well, I, I guess if, if you have concerns. About something that is in this draft document that rise to the level that. You don't think you could ratify the document, that would be something that that we would certainly want to know and and sort of understand what the reason is. Um, because ultimately we, we do have to ratify these in order for them to take effect or we're going to have to go back and redo this exercise later, so. Um, I, either, either the mayor or council member Ashby or I would need to know if you have deal breakers based on what you've read in this document.
Thanks.
So and the plan is unless you direct us otherwise, we're. We're represented because of council member Clausen's role as the executive director at Transit. Beck is currently uh the chair at uh on the the executive board at at K R C C. So she's attending these meetings. I'm attending these meetings, our, as our representative and Nick's attending them, so. If you're comfortable with that level of engagement, we won't bring these, but you, you give us your concerns and um. I think Nick has a very good handle on this and Beck's uh made some, some very astute comments that, you know. We got to look at this from how does this harm Port Orchard lens? Uh, and there's things that we probably just need to negotiate and and work through a process on.
Thank you.
You know, Rob, if I may, there, there's just a couple of things that I would add to that and. You know, you look at this through the lens of how will this hurt Port Orchard? Uh, from a negative standpoint, but it's also something that we also need to understand. Because this document is going to help us, if you will. Focus on where. Improvements are going to be made or, you know, it was mentioned earlier today about the critical. Uh, infrastructure improvements. You know, it's going to tie our hands in some cases and and encourage us. To focus some things and another, and it's not that it's a bad deal. I just personally, I want to make sure that we all understand what those. Parameters are that it's going to be included in here.
And I would, I would add one more point and and that is that. You know, we want some flexibility in these policies, but we also don't want to be the jurisdiction that has to carry the burden for the entire county and so. Issues like affordable housing, um, we need. Strong enough policies in the housing element to make sure that the more affluent communities are going to take their fair share of. Providing affordable housing and not uh uh have that all fall to us, so. Yes, we want to, we want flexibility out of the document, but we also want to hold. All of the jurisdictions accountable and make sure that everybody is doing their, their fair share.
Well said.
Yep.
Councilmember Chang.
I have a quick question for Nick, which is you mentioned Kingston getting uh or participating in a pot along with three of the cities. Do you know if Southworth will ever raise rice at the same level as Kingston in terms of like a lammard or something?
So Southworth is currently a rural area. Um. I, I can't remember if Southworth Worth is a lammard or not, but the problem in Southworth and in talking to the tribe about this. Is there are a lot of sensitive areas in Southworth. Manchester is actually. I, I would, I would argue is closer to to. Potentially being an urban area than Southworth. It's, it's just that the residents of Manchester don't want to be urban. Um, Southworth, I think, has enough critical areas and challenges. There just isn't a lot of developable land there. Um, without requiring significant mitigation and so I, I really don't see it rising to the level of Kingston. Um, I, I think it could certainly be a commuter park and ride type facility, but um. You know, council member Ashby asked me that question probably two years ago and I had some conversations on that. And after looking at the critical area layers on, on the county's um interactive G I S site. It, it's pretty apparent that there are stream, there are creeks and streams running through there, shoreline issues, slope issues. Um, it's just a really hard area to to do a whole lot with.
One of the anomalies with Southworth is that it does have high capacity transit. Which makes it. Very unique. I know if, if we were dealing with today's rules. Southworth probably wouldn't have a ferry terminal.
Thankfully, it does.
Well, yeah, I mean, the ferry, which the chicken and the egg, the ferry came before these rules, so.
All right, have we spent enough time on this? Should we move on to uh the water restoration and enhancement draft plan?
But my, just a comment or question, I'm not sure, but. You know, this document includes the revenue sharing local agreement and it acknowledges. That we uh withdrew from this back in twenty ten. Having this document in the, the planning policies when we adopt. Are we inadvertently going back in and agreeing to some local agreement?
No, definitely not. And like I said, the, there were, if you do a word search for appendix, um, I think it was D. It only appears five times in the document and three of those are headers or footers or table of content references. One of them is the title of the appendix and the other one was one goal that mentioned revenue sharing, which is proposed for deletion. So everything but the appendix is going away and I think that the appendix can go away with the policy that references it.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't inadvertently slide onto something we withdrew from.
No, and that was discussed at the executive committee two this morning. Um, and there was a suggestion that it be removed, so I think there'll be support on it coming out.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Dorsey, you want to talk about the water restoration and enhancement draft plan?
Uh, yes, I do, and I think I'm going to potentially make your, everybody's evening. And not have this be a belabored conversation tonight. I first want to thank our city attorney for taking my uh draft. Work, study, session, executive summary um and adding a lot of really good information. And that's one key piece for tonight's presentation to think about. The other is the fact that the actual uh Department of Ecology deadline has been pushed back. So we were first under a deadline where we had to take an action by on the twenty third. Now we have the ability to take action on the. Thirteenth meeting and so we're going to have this topic actually discussed. Um, at next week's as a discussion item, so. We can either go through this more in depth tonight or give everybody a chance to really read it. Again, I think Charlie did a fantastic job to condense this very um. Confusing and kind of overlapping process with our foster pilot program. So basically at this point, um. Does, does the council want me to read any of the issues or background into the record or? Or how do we run the fork? Cause you know, it's pretty lengthy as far as an executive summary, but there's a lot of information, so. Um, I'm at your disposal. If you want me to read into the record, I can. If you just want to. Start asking Charlie and myself or Jackie who's here questions, we can do that. So really, it's kind of, it's up to you. Uh, the ten thousand foot is that the. Uh, city's been engaged in this. Rec or water restoration enhancement draft plan. Even though we're a permitted, we operate two permitted water systems. This applies specifically to exempt wells or non-permitted. But at the end of the day, it has to do with. Providing governance to put water back into the ground when you take it out of the ground. And so this doesn't affect us directly. There are benefits uh to us. Adopting this plan and I know that Charlie did a good summary of the pros and cons. You know, at the end of this uh summary. Um, so really. That's, I guess that's all I really have to say unless, again, unless you want me to just to read it into the record and then ask questions.
So following up on Mark's comments, um, you know, at first I had some serious reservations about us adopting. A plan that we're really not party to and uh at ten, at a high level. We'd be doing that, I, I think really for political reasons to be a uh a good partner to ecology and they're. Um, the ones we're, we're working through the foster pilot program with, so uh it's. A good portion of this is is political goodwill. In my, in my opinion.
Um, if I could interject for a second, it's actually not adopting the plan, it's approving the plan.
Pro, excuse me, approving the plan, yes.
And it is approving a draft plan, which was my concern, but that's how ecology is and ecology is wanting to. Proceed with this is have everybody approve the draft plan. And then they'll receive comments and they'll at some point formalize a formal plan. So I had some consternation in the beginning because I was, even though I've been involved with it on the fringe. I, and I think as of a week ago. I think myself and Jackie and Zach and Charlie and the mayor, we were. We had a lot of different, we were differing of opinion. But again, uh, Charlie dug in as she does and did a really good job of. Finding all the bits and pieces and putting it into a very readable document, so. Um, at this point as staff, I have no problem um having you guys read through this more thoroughly. We have it as a discussion item next week and ask some particular questions, but I have no reservation at this point. Uh, recommending that we go ahead and approve this plan. I, I see only the upside and and the downsides are minimal.
Questions for Mr. Dorsey on this or Charlie or Jackie? So you're going to see this as a, an action item on the agenda next Tuesday, so I just want you to to understand that.
It's going to be a discussion next Tuesday. We're going to have the actual action on the April, first April meeting.
Why do we have it as a discussion item if we have it tonight?
We found out late last week that ecology has pushed back their deadline of April fifth to the fifteenth. So having the um approval of the plan on the thirteenth will still meet their deadline.
Yeah, and I, I just thought. Yeah, and I, I just thought, and we don't have to have it as a discussion item. If council has questions next week. My thought is if they read through this and have questions, if we had it as a discussion item, you could at least field a few questions. But if nobody, if everybody's good with it, then we'll just take it right to the 13th.
Why don't they take their questions offline to you? We have a packed agenda next Tuesday. We're gonna have a three hour meeting. To add this as a discussion item isn't necessary, I don't believe.
Okay, so if anybody has read through it, if anybody has questions. Charlie, Jackie, and Zach and I will field those questions. So that when we come back on the 13th. As part of the discussion and action. Everything resolved.
And we pulled the, the salient pieces out as an attachment to this evening agenda. The full document is 300 pages plus, but a huge chunk of it is not at all relevant. Uh, it details the, the various projects. It's not, it's not relevant to the, the final analysis. It's sort of a. Uh, a living documentation of things that the RIA and the rec are doing. Um, so. The salient pieces should be attached to your agenda for this evening.
Yes, yes, and I will, moving forward with the, the packet. Basically, we'll create a staff report, and I think this is by resolution we determined.
Correct, yeah, we already have that.
I will create a, a resolution with some whereas is to pull out these key. Key talk, talking points and have a very uh, streamlined staff report. With, again, probably with the information that we included out of the. The draft from tonight's packet.
So Councilor Shane, go ahead.
I have a really basic question for Mark, which is my understanding, I appreciate the 10,000 foot level summary that you've given. Um, and what I heard was that it not only regulates the water that we take out, but sort of the water that we put back. So by that, does that, how does that relate to stormwater? Does it?
It will, it, so with respect to this. Plan, which is dealing with this, this plan has to do with. Properties within the wire or the watershed inventory. That it has to do with really like me, I have a well, I take water out, but I have a septic system. And after treatment, it goes back in. So really, that's what this is addressing. It's non-permitted wells. Not our permitted wells like at the city, so. So what it's doing is, as you know, with Foster. We're, we're working through this whole process of getting water rights where. We're taking water out of the ground, and in order to be able to get the water rights to take the water out of the ground. We're having to provide augmentation and mitigation on a much larger scale, scale, right? It's. We're, we're pulling from macro first. 1500 feet down, we're pulling out 1500 gallons a minute. And that's what Foster is resolving. What this is doing in a microcosm is it's looking at. Really, the state and think of everybody that you know that has an individual well on a septic system. They're managing that because they've never been regulated. They've never been really tracked on, hey, you're pulling out. You know, 10 gallons a minute. That what, how is your water going back into the ground? And so it's basically creating framework at that level to make sure that for the non-permitted or the individual systems. That we're not just drawing a bunch of water out and not returning it back in for stream flow. Restoration, okay? So it really doesn't affect us directly, but ultimately the outcome of this. Is going to maybe have an impact on us on permitted systems. As it relates to future conversations with the fish and wildlife and the tribes and so forth. So is that a?
Just, just like.
Thank you.
Sorry, just like the um, Foster, just the Foster Pilot Project came out of the Foster Court Decision. This came out of the Hurst Court Decision whereby um, environmental groups and or tribes. Said Department of Ecology, you're not quantifying water that's being pulled out through exempt wells or non-permitted wells. So we need to get a handle on how much water is coming out, and this is. The fix, this like we have the Foster Pilot for the Foster Fix, this is the Hurst Fix.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, my question goes back to our CPPs. Um, and will this affect rural growth?
I don't see how.
Yeah, maybe Charlie, I, I don't see how it would. It's, it's really just a, a monitoring. And again, most residential. Systems are putting water into the ground. You know, because they have onsite septic systems.
I think this could potentially have a positive impact on rural growth, because I think the Hurst decision. In response to the Hurst decision, the number of agencies. Slowed or stopped processing permit applications while they sort of. Recoiled and figured out their next strategy in order to comply. And so with this, this sort of programmatic systemic fix for those agencies that. Issue and work with permits for these wells. And this provides a framework for them to maybe expedite that process.
Okay, any last questions? All right, you'll see this back on April 13th. And if you've got any questions, direct them to Mark, and then he can get. What the, filter them and get the answers from the appropriate parties. Uh, before we head into our executive session. Chief Brown uh, said he had one quick good of the order he wanted to share.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate it. Um, I, I wanted to share a, a really good story from a police department team. That happened after council last week. Uh, we got a call to um. A disturbance here locally, and when we showed up. Uh, we're told that um, there was a woman in behavioral health crisis, and we happened to find her in the parking lot. And she was in her car with a couple of knives, uh, threatening to take her own life. So um, our officers did exactly what they've been trained to do, and they, they created time, space and put a barrier in between. Her and them uh, to de-escalate, and they talked to her for about half an hour and. Talked her out of her knives and talked her out of her locked car, and we were able to get her the help that she needed at the hospital. So. They did a, a fantastic job, and I wanted to share that with you guys, just so you know. Uh, the, the caliber of, of the men and women of your department. So that was Officer Lynch, Officer Hubrick and Sergeant Horsley. So thank you for letting me take a little bit of time before your uh, uh, executive session. Uh, yes, yes, sir.
Chief, just real quickly, when would the, when would you bring the navigator into the situation? Uh, like that?
We, we don't. She doesn't work in the field. So she, she responds um, after these circumstances. Um, there are DCRs and MHPs that we um, can reach out through, through KMH.
Thank you very much.
Can you, uh, can you explain those acronyms you just threw at us?
Yeah, I'm sorry, designated crisis responder and mental health professional. Um, so we, we try and reach out to them when we can, but they, they are not uh. Negotiators in, in that type of sense. They, they are also come in after the scene is, is secure.
Thank you for sharing, chief.
You bet.
All right, we are going to hit, we have three topics, and Charlie's gonna read the pertinent. Uh, RCWs uh, for the executive session, and we. Uh, could potentially take action after the executive session. So uh, take it away, Ms. Archer.
Well, can I ask you my question first?
Yes.
So we have, do we have?
We are, we are leaving this meeting. The public meeting is still going to be, and we're all going. I sent everybody. A Zoom invite for an executive session, so you're gonna leave this meeting. Click on the link that I sent you. And then we're gonna leave that meeting and come back to this meeting.
Okay, I want to make sure.
Everybody clear on that? Everybody got the link in your email? I sent it earlier today. So go, go to your email and find your, uh, there's a link I emailed to you. Okay, Charlie, go ahead.
Thank you. So we will have um, an executive session to discuss three separate items this evening. The first pursuant to RCW 4230 110, subpart one, subpart B, consider the selection of real estate for purchase. RCW 4230 110 1I to discuss litigation to which the city is a party with legal counsel. And RCW 4230 110 1, subpart I, to discuss legal risks of a proposed agency action with legal counsel. And I believe 20 minutes to start? 30 or 20 minutes?
Let's start with 20 minutes.
Um, with, as the mayor mentioned, with action to follow, potential action to follow.
Okay, we'll see you guys uh.
Executive session has been extended 10 more minutes. The executive session has been extended 10 more minutes.
Our agenda to add two items. Councilor Claussen.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend our agenda to include the action on a settlement agreement. And um, discussion and action on. The acceptance of permits for community events.
A motion by Councilmember Claussen, a second by Councilmember Luca Reli to amend our agenda to add two items. One being a settlement agreement and the second related to applications for uh, festivals and events. Further discussion of adding those two items to our agenda. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? I am for time. It's getting late. All right.
You don't have a vote.
I don't, I know. So, all right, the first item is a settlement agreement. And Ms. Archer, do you want to speak to that uh, agreement?
Absolutely. Uh, before the council this evening is a proposed settlement agreement. Uh, with litigants who brought an action against the city. Uh, the terms of which uh, include resolution of that litigation action. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain a motion.
Is there a motion? Councilor Claussen.
Mayor, I move that we approve the settlement agreement.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Claussen and a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe to approve the settlement agreement that. Since I'm terribly sorry. Is there any further discussion or questions of council related to the settlement agreement?
Is, is that specific enough? It seemed rather vague. We're just approving a settlement agreement. Do we need to name? With whom, Charlie, you indicated with the litigant.
Uh, we don't need to provide the name uh, as part of the motion. We absolutely can if that's Council's preference.
Just so it's clear enough in the record as well.
Important thing is when we file the agreement in court, I think. All right, if there aren't any questions, we'll be, you'll be voting on the approval of a settlement agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, the settlement agreement has been approved. Second item is related to festivals. Is there a motion? Councilmember Rose, or excuse me, Chang.
Uh, I move that due to the COVID pandemic, we suspend the acceptance of special events applications until the first meeting in May.
I'd like to amend that.
Actually, we just, you can die without a second if, would be a more cleaner way to do that.
Uh, Councilman Chang, could you just um, repeat that? Only say indefinitely.
Oh, yes. Due to the COVID pandemic, uh, the motion is to suspend the acceptance of special events applications.
Indefinitely. Second. A motion by Councilmember Chang, second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. To uh, suspend the acceptance of applications related to special events indefinitely. Is there any uh, comments or questions related to this?
Yeah, just like you made a comment, I, I appreciate the uh. Action by the council on this. We have a LTAC meeting on Monday, and this helped clarifies things for us, so I appreciate it.
Councilor Claussen.
Yeah, and I, I would add that um. Part of the reasoning for at least my support of this uh, motion. Is until we get. Clear guidance from the governor's office on specifically what are the. Uh, conditions related to. Community gatherings and whatever phase that he puts us into, so. There's a lot of uncertainty exactly what the current approval from the governor's office is.
Councilmember Luca Reli.
I also want to add that this is actually um, to be prudent with um, the limited staff that we have at the city right now and. Um, that we're not wasting staff time until we know better um, how to move forward.
Yes, and I would, I would just add that our intent is not to. Limit or suspend in um, the events that we've had downtown. Because we appreciate all those events. We appreciate the nonprofits that put those events together. However, we do need to be cautious during this particular time. And as soon as we have the appropriate information, we can move forward again.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, you'd be voting on the suspension of applications related to festivals and events. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none. I bet is our last business item. I do have a, a good of the order, though, on the agenda, so in bold letters. So Councilor Claussen, do you have a good of the order?
Well, I, I guess it doesn't sound like it's gonna be as good as yours. It's more of a question. Since this is typically a regular council meeting. Do we need to excuse a couple of our members for not being in attendance? I'm not sure if you've talked with them or not.
I, I have. I, I know um. The reasons for their absences. We normally don't excuse anybody for a work study, but we did take action on. Uh, some items. Charlie, what's your thought?
I believe your code just indicates this is a regular meeting, so since that's a practice that the city has, uh, I think it would be advisable.
Okay.
But that, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we excuse uh. Mr. Diener and Mr. Kachardi from tonight's meeting.
And.
Second.
I know that Mr. Kachardi's absence was for personal reasons, and Mr. Diener's was for work reasons, so. For that helps the clerks, so a motion and a second to excuse Councilmembers Diener and Kachardi from this evening's meeting. Further discussion of that. Hearing none, all in favor of approving those excusals, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Say anyone opposed? Hearing none, the absences are, are excused. All right, good of the order. I don't have any, but I added to the agenda because I was asked to. So you better have one. All right, no, no good of the order, but I ask. Councilmember Claussen?
Well, I guess I will throw one in since you're asked for it. I just wanted to uh. Extend the invitation to the council. Kitchep Transit is going to be. Starting the Southworth to downtown Seattle ferry run on the 29th, I believe it is. But on Saturday, the 27th, we are inviting the community to, uh, if they are interested to come down and. We're gonna uh, take folks for a ride in the new boat out of the Southworth Ferry Terminal. Uh, we are, though, limiting the number of folks that we're gonna allow for social distancing on the. On the vessel, but if any of you are interested. Um, I'm sorry, I don't have the times here in front of me. There's four times 9:30.
9:15, 11 something.
12 something and one something, so. If you want to reach out to me, I could give you the specifics on it, but anyway, just. You do need to let me know if you're interested in going so that I can make sure that we have space available on the sailing that you would like to participate.
And as I told Mayor Wheeler this morning, the cool kids are going at 9:15.
But that means that the 9:15 is gonna be filling up quicker than the other three, so I just warn you. You want to be with the cool kids like Mayor Patanzu. Give me your requests, so.
We need to be careful of quorum.
You can sit at different areas of the boat.
Okay, or we just have to notice it.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? Council, no, you're waving goodbye.
I'm waving goodbye.
All right. All right, we'll see you next week, if not sooner.